I'd like to call this meeting to order. Under the City of Jefferson City Council Meeting Policies and Procedures Adopted July 23, 2024 Resolution 64-24, I am invoking under citizen participation, any presentation materials must be given to the city administrator before noon on the day of the council meeting. With that said, let's go with the open forum.
The neighbor across the street again. Excuse me. He brought another trailer back over there. Actually, he threw everybody out, you know, that was living there. There's like five people. Anyhow, last week, he brought a young couple back over there to clean the place up or whatever, and then he went over and got a dump trailer that's not his, that actually it was the guy that lived there before, and it's half full or was. He brought it in the yard and unhooked it. He had those two people bring all the garbage out of the house and throw in there, and the stuff that was on the yard in there. And he brought Ferg over and talked to him. He wanted to know if Ferg would do some work and do this and do that. And anyhow, then he took all the garbage along the garage up there and threw it in the truck. Drive by and look at it. It's completely full of junk, and he said he's not moving it because it's not his trailer. It's the people that lived there before. So I don't know who's, you know, it's getting to be... And then there was a lawnmower, junk lawnmower up there. He pushed it over into the weeds, and two snow boars, he pushed them over into the weeds by Ferg's house along the fence there. There's a washer and dryer and stoves sitting, one of them sitting right there in the middle of the driveway, you know? I don't, the lawnmowers I don't care about, but he just brings junk in there that don't run, and he's got a couple, I don't know, whatever things there. He brought some down today to see if they could work on. But anyhow, he said he's not going to move it because it's not his trailer. Well, he should be responsible for cleaning the mess up in the house that he had there. Oh, the other thing is, them two people they brought in, Ferg talked to them, and he went down to Des Moines and got them out of homeless shelter down there and brought them up here. Yep. Yeah, so the guy left, so Ferg asked him if he wanted to work, and he said, yeah, he'd work. He said, well, I might have him help me tomorrow, do some gutter work. Well, he won't forget him, he wouldn't get out of bed. So anyhow, later on that afternoon, the cops came down and arrested him. I mean to tell you, folks, this is getting to be, the bold and beautiful is a piece of cake compared to this place across the street. I'm not kidding you. I don't know what we're going to do with the trailer now. I don't, he should be, he brought it over there, but he says it's not his. Well, boy, we thought we had a problem before. I don't know what we're going to do now. Okay, thank you for your time.
We'll have the...
You know, the other thing about it is that trailer, they threw garbage in it for a month or so. There's got to be mice and rats and everything else getting into that den, you know? There's got, that's a public, that's not a, that's a health problem there. Oh, the other thing is, there's a trailer behind the garage, that fifth-wheel trailer that was a camper that burned up a long time ago. He asked Ferg, he said, you know anybody would take that? You know what, get rid of it. Well, Ferg said, no. Well, he's piled all kinds of garbage on it. Nobody's ever going to take that out of there, you know? But the trailer deal, like I said, I'm not sure, he should be responsible, he's the one that brought it over there, you know? So I, you know, I got a better idea, but I can't do it on, okay. Well, thank you for your time, guys.
Thanks, Jerry.
Item three, the consent items.
I move to approve. Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Samalik.
Aye.
Under new business, the ordinance submitting the code of ordinance in the City of Jefferson, Iowa, 2017 by amending the provision relating to water rates.
So this would be the third reading, and this would increase retail rates by 5%. In the council pack, there was a scenario that shows what the impact is to customers' bills here then. It's on page three, and it's based upon the number of cubic feet that's used. But if you're a small user and it's 200 cubic feet, if that's used during that month, the amount of the increase is 98 cents. Okay? If you're an average user, about 500 cubic feet, it's $2.28 would be the amount of the 5% increase. Again, this pertains to water, does not pertain to sewer rates, just water.
And then just to reiterate again, this raise in rates is in anticipation of, in some years, just like what happened with the sewer plant, in some years, the water plant will have to be remodeled or even replaced.
Yeah, very, very well looking at that, so, and we'll really get into this a little more as we get to the chance to review our capital improvements plan, because there's a large water plant project that would be included in the capital improvements plan. And then, but as you, as you think about being able to set aside some revenues to help out with that project, that's what's happening now, because we're able to have these annual rate increases. So essentially, it's, think of it a little bit, you know, every year, as opposed to the really large rate increase when you do a project.
So with all the rate increases, how much of a stash pot do you have from raising it the last, however many years it goes up?
Yep, so we do look at between $250,000 and $275,000 a year, and we're something over $2 million in the, in the savings for the project now. But the project itself could vary, today's, today's number would be $10 million or more in the, in the future. That cost, of course, just goes up.
Have you done any surveys to see if you can eliminate some expenses, find cheaper materials, or save money?
We, you know, I guess we look at that all the time, you know, as far as what we're doing with vendors, and do want to make sure that we always use competitive vendors when we're doing it.
So has there been any way to save any money, or is it just pay it and go?
Try, you know, truthfully, just, yeah, we want to be as efficient as we can in our operations, because, you know, as you look at that and you look for those cost savings, I mean, it's, it's not that we're just going to defer projects and not do it, you know? That, that would be negative. So when we, when we look at that, really, it's looking at the acquisition and making sure that, that you're doing it in an efficient manner and that you're efficient in your costs and that you're working with vendors on that.
When... And our normal operating expenses, I mean, they go up every year. We've got our wage increases, that's, that's all just pretty standard, but, you know, and in the meetings, and our, our public service guys, I think, are really watching as far as the supplies. I know a number of times, they've talked about changing chlorine supplies and things like that because they found a better deal. So I really do, I think that they're doing everything they can.
When approximately will there need to be the big water plant project?
Within, within our capital improvements plan, they will suggest 34, so we're looking at another 10 years.
10 years.
So, which is a little bit further off in the future than what we had anticipated originally. So looking at a plan, some planned maintenance, some smaller planned maintenance projects to keep everything functioning properly, but, and look for a larger project then, potentially 10 years in the future. And if we could get to this point, it really works out great, where we look at sewer project now, water project 10 years later, turn it around again, because it'd be sewer project 10 years later, roughly 20 years on life expectancy of, of anything is a good rule of thumb to work at.
Can I just ask a short question and clarify? This upcoming plan will be an entirely new water plant, or will it be a overhaul on the existing plant?
Okay, so largely unknown, but it would certainly be a retrofit, not, not anything new, if Jim can speak into it at all. Thank you.
Yeah, right now, I think the three options in the, in the preliminary engineering report we did were do nothing and do a plant rehab at the existing location or a new site, and the rehab is the preferred option at this time.
I've received, and I think we all did, I've received one email from someone, and their point was perhaps elderly people, this would be a burden, but I, and I'm not saying, you know, it's not hard if you're living on a shoestring, but 98 cents versus $2.28 or whatever it was.
Yeah.
But other than that, I haven't heard anything.
I've had a couple, but I just, just a couple.
I've heard a lot of people complain about it. You got daily living expenses insane, it's only 5%, but we're, Jefferson's dubbed as a retirement community, and there's a lot of people that pinch every pennies, and they just can't afford it. It'd be nice to give people just a 5% break one time, and, you know, I just don't think, you know, the, with taxes and everything else keep going up, I mean, people need a break, and I don't think anybody up here, you know, deals with the public how I do, that people just can't afford it, and 5% ain't much, but, you know, you look at our school district, you look at everybody with all the free reduced lunches, there's a lot of people hurting in this community, including the food bank, everywhere else, they're bombarded, and resources are dwindling. So I am not in favor of it at this time.
I guess I would just be worried, looking at the sewer plant, which it wasn't an option, and if we hadn't made that little nest egg, we might be looking at now an increased rate of, I mean, didn't we say in Pittsburgh, they jumped it? I mean, that's a big different thing, but didn't they jump at 50%?
There, there are examples of that, even around the state, there's examples of that. But what I, what I would encourage you is that you, you have the opportunity to be proactive in thinking and be preparing for that type of stuff to really eliminate the painful, painful rate hikes in the future.
By the time, when's the last time the water rates did not go up every year? I remember back in...
Yeah, I don't know yet.
I mean, it used to be 23, 23.50 a month back in 99. I mean, it's, it's beyond double. I mean, there's people with high water bills, and it hurts people. I just don't think now's the time to do it, and you can always do it next year and just give people something back. That's my opinion.
I move to approve item A.
Samalik.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
No.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item B is consideration approval passment number 20, Shank Constructors Incorporated
Yes, so this is for work completed through the month of September, including some of the items that were in your packet, included seeding, installation of site concrete, painting and biosolids building and pump room, installation of grit, mixed liquor return, sledge transfer and aeration piping, electrical installation in the blower building, pretreatment building and biosolids loadout building, and materials for communication and fiber. This puts us approximately 79% complete on the project to date, and we would recommend approval of the passment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Samalik.
Aye. Let me see.
Mayor, just one, one real quick comment on that again, about taking that, that facilities tour, that we have a facilities tour set for what would occur right before the next council meeting, so it'd be 4 o'clock before the next council meeting, 22nd. So we'll meet out there at the, at the sewer plant, so, you know, get there, I guess, as soon, as soon as you can. The engineers will be there, be able to talk us through, really, just a project update about where we're at on everything. And so we'd go out there, have our, our facility steward, and come here for the council meeting.
Item C is pay request number one to Caliber Concrete in the amount of $114,169.38 for the pickleball project.
Yes, so this is for work on the project since it began about August 19th through the end of September, September 27th, including items would be the grading, the subgrade, subgrade prep, aggregate, aggregate subbase, the concrete, and a portion of the fencing. They have since completed all the grading around the site, they have all the posts in place, and the fencing was being put up today. Looks like they should have, well, they do have the sidewalk replaced on the public sidewalk, in front of the area has been replaced, all that's in. Hopefully seeding later this week or early next week. Looks like they should have everything done, but the acrylic surfacing by the substantial complete season date, I think, which is October 18th. So everything's looking pretty good. Hopefully, the weather stays warm like it is, and then the acrylic surfacing shouldn't be a problem. I think that's somewhere around the 27th or somewhere around in there is the 30 days for that. So we would recommend approval of the pay application.
So I've had questions about that, too. Will, just for the record, will you explain where this money has come from?
Sure. Really, three pots of money accessed to fund this project. So if you think of the project itself and think it's about $225,000, okay? There was an initial contribution from, from the city, it was $40,000, from those family funds which were donated for rec purposes, so that's where those, those funds had come from. Roughly, $100,000 was, was raised privately through, through private giving, and then there was some Grow Green dollars that all went into that, too. So they had a nice, a nice grant for that. So some, some city contribution, private funding and Grow Green dollars.
And the city contribution was from funds that were already part of the parts of rec umbrella?
True. It had been, it had been given a, given previously as a, as a gift to the city to be used for recreation purposes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Samalik.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item D is consideration change order number one for the East Lincoln Way project, reducing the contract cost by $8,854.01.
So the project is complete, all the punch list items have been completed. This change order is basically a reconciliation change order to change all the quantities to the as constructed quantities, adjusting the contract amount to the final amount, which, as the mayor said, is a reduction of about $8,854. Project went well. Like I said, everything's complete, they had punch list complete. Some of the major, major items of reduction were the pavement widening, just because of where we decided to end on some of that. We did save some money on those, on those widening pieces, and a few of the manholes that we had as major adjustments were only minor adjustments because they were just under the gravel, so we had some savings there, so we would recommend approval. And I guess final contract amount goes from $833,555 to $824,700.99. Sorry, I said that terribly.
Move to approve.
Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Samalik.
Aye. Item B is pay request number three to Enrolls LLC in the amount of 400, or excuse me, $4,858.30 for the East Lincoln Way project.
So this pay estimate is for some final adjustments in quantities that we had with contractor from our previous pay estimate, and basically is an, an all but retainage pay request, so everything is, with this pay request, everything will have been paid but the pay, but the retainage. And then the next item will be to accept the project, and then after that, the 30 days wait will start, and then we will do the release of retainage at the first November meeting. But this is to just get some final adjustments in quantities paid out, and we would recommend approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Jackson.
Aye.
Samalik.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Item F is resolution accepting completed construction and approving final payment for the East Lincoln Way resurfacing project.
Yep, so as I said, project has been completed, all punch list items have been addressed, everything is done, we've done the reconciliation change order. We're calling the date of final completion September 25th, 2024. That will be the date that the warranty period starts, and the final contract amount is $824,790.99, and we would recommend approval of the final acceptance.
Move to approve. Second.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item G is planning for physical year 20, planning for physical year 25, 2025 to 2026.
Yeah, just wanted to have a little discussion with you. As we start to begin thinking about our budget prep for, for this upcoming year already, the question for the council then is, what type of planning might, might we like to do for this upcoming year? So you think about what was happening about this time last year, that we had a consultant come in, Pat Halhan, came in and walked us through this goal-setting and strategic planning process, okay? So within your packet, I included the, the goals which were identified there, and then the work that had been done to, to address any of those goals, okay? So my question to the council is, you know, really, what type, what type of planning might you look at? Talked with, with Pat, you know, is there any chance that we would, would utilize his, his services again this year? Certainly open to that, but he said oftentimes what, what cities would do is look at doing planning and basically do it on a two-year cycle. So the, it would work something similar, so we would do planning again the following year after election time, okay? But in this case, we'd just done planning a year ago, said it'd be time for, for an internal review of the plan and, and just really approach the, the planning in that regards. What I might pitch to you is that I think we can put together a real successful and really needed type of a planning session that will accomplish two things. If we get together and, and go through our, our goals from last year and where we're at and any other goals that were identified, and go through our capital improvements plan, okay? So that capital improvements plan, we, we have another draft back from our, from our financial advisor, and we're working through that right now. By the time we'd be ready to, to perform our planning in, in November, we'll have those things ready to go. So I think I just might pitch that to you as an option for planning, is to really have, have a special meeting, and it'd be focused on two things, for reviewing our strategic plan from last year and then working through our capital improvements plan. Ideas on that, any thoughts?
Your suggestion is that, yeah, we would do that, but probably not bring in an outside facilitator?
Yeah, it's, it sounded like that was, that was something that we could certainly do on ourself, on our own then, and update that, and, and have some reconsideration of some of the items that were brought up during planning last year but didn't make the, didn't make the priority list, and, and, you know, essentially create new priority lists out of that then, too.
I think that sounds reasonable. When were you talking about having this special meeting?
I would, I want to, want to get our capital improvements plan done and run it through our finance committee. So if, if we can get that all done here in the next couple of weeks, and then they'll meet more towards the end of the month, so it would be the first, first part of, of November. I would like to have a special meeting to be able to focus on planning and, and the capital improvements plan, so say maybe it'd be about the third week of, of, excuse me, second week, third week of November, around that timeframe.
Yeah, I, I think I'm available then. Yeah, I'm gonna be, I have school playing, community players play the 8th and 9th weekend of the 15th and 16th, but you're talking about the weekend after, or the week after that.
I would just figure that we'd do it a Tuesday night, just probably on an off week when we normally wouldn't meet, we would just have a special meeting.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of value in doing it. I mean, not, not skipping a year and waiting for a, a new and another facilitated session. I think we've seen a lot of value in what's been done, and some of that's based on the fact that we had it on the list and...
Yeah, absolutely.
...focused on it, and we kind of, kind of the same reason, I think, to revisit that and do some reprioritization within this group.
Yeah, I would tell you, for me, as, especially coming in as your new administrator, this was very, very valuable, as far as knowing where to focus your attention, and we want to have that same type of focus then in the upcoming year, too.
I agree with that, and not to have a huge shakeup after just one year, and especially with some of these bigger projects, maybe it'll, it may take more than two years, but at least to give it two years to, for us to look at it before we suddenly change the bullseye again.
Good. Yeah, if, if folks are on board with that general idea, we'll, we'll kind of walk down that road.
Lou, let's go ahead and plan on it. Under reports, Jim.
Nothing further.
Roxanne.
No report.
David.
No report.
Scott.
Hey, a couple of things for you. We had had some discussion about trees and tree removal, and the issue was placed back into committee, and we actually had that then considered by two committees. So we had it considered by the Water, Sewer, Streets Committee, and then also the Finance Committee about the financial impact on that. I would tell you that the committees are really of the same mind on that, that we would really not seek to proceed with enforcement maybe as fast as what we had, had hoped for or had initially discussed. So a few, few components here, work on a communication plan and still continue to communicate with the public about the importance of getting dead trees addressed, but really work on postponing the, the enforcement action on that, but focus on more cooperation on, on that, like, can, can the city get together a list of contractors and be able to offer assistance to folks, you know, at least on the, as they're looking for somebody to do the work? And the other thing that'll come back to the, to the financial, to the finance committee would be any type of assistance plan for, for financing, because again, it is, it's concerning to me, and that there's going to be some low-income homeowners out there for whom this will be a true hardship, to be able to remove those trees. So if, if there is anything that the city could do to help out some of those folks, and maybe it is something that's similar to what we will do for sidewalks, that we, we would finance, basically finance those, and for sidewalks, we finance them over two years. But we'll have that continued discussion then with the, with the finance committee. Having said that, though, if there is true enforcement of nuisance trees that needs to be done, we will still do that. And I know Chad's been working with, with the city attorney to make sure we got all of the documents in place to, to be able to address this, because there are some concerns that are being expressed already, and oftentimes it comes in the form of, my neighbor's tree overhangs my house and is now dead, and I'm very concerned about this. You know, and in those cases, if it, if it is that it is true nuisance, we can, we will still look at that as far as nuisance enforcement, it'd just be on a case-by-case basis.
What's the process of that? Does Chad or someone go talk to the person that has the tree personally, is a letter sent? sent? Is it, is it all those things?
Yeah, it's all those things because on, on the legal side of things, nothing starts until you give them official notice, but Chad will go talk with them beforehand.
Okay. How are we going to enforce that when you can't even enforce the nuisance that Gary Turner speaks about twice a month?
Same, you know, same process we're using, using with Gary, that, you know, and we have had some success there and, and we'll keep, keep really beating that drum in order to, to get the nuisance addressed.
I mean, because that's been, that's just been ongoing and, you know, how are we going to focus on trees when you got that mess there that you can't get anything done about?
It's- Yeah, like I say, it's, that if we're focusing on any trees as far as nuisance abatement, it is that they're true nuisances and, and true, true concerns that would need to be addressed immediately. Now that's-
I'd say there's lots of things all the time and it's, you know, sometimes the wheels of things turn awfully slow. But I mean, it all has to be followed legally and, you know, hopefully it never comes to anything with a legal thing, but it, you know, community cooperation, I think is a good thing.
Sure. My, my second thing is input from, from the DOT meeting about the proposal for Highway 4 to change that from four to three lanes. We had a large, large turnout for, for this public meeting and DOT had estimated that it was somewhere right around 100 folks had turned out for this, for this public meeting and gave lots, lots of public comment. So in the process, excuse me, process here is that the DOT is compiling all of the community input and then the DOT folks will come back to the Streets Committee and, and give presentation then to the Streets Committee. And I would expect a, a recommendation from the Streets Committee that we would bring to the, to the council. Even if the recommendation is negative, I think it's important that we would, we need to get this back out to the public to know that, that a decision's been made either way. So I, you would expect it to come back to the council. So look for the DOT to come to their next meeting, more at the, at the end of this month, so it'd be around November that the issue could conceivably come back to the council. That's it.
Mark.
Anything?
Harry.
No report.
Matt.
No report.
Chad.
No report.
No Pat?
No.
And I have nothing. So we're done.